Calling to order, this is a meeting of the Hammond Board of Selectmen and Board of Health, April twentieth, twenty twenty one, six P M., being conducted in the auditorium, also on Zoom remotely, in accordance with Governor Baker's emergency orders of twenty twenty, March twenty twenty. Please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
The Fledge of Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Recording the meeting other than us, can everyone hear us, signify by waving or something? Yes?
Everybody's muted, let me unmute them. Or ask them to unmute.
Nancy.
It's good.
Thank you. Do we have any minutes?
We do not.
The first order of business is the outdoor dining and outdoor alcohol service.
We had a request from the gentleman who owns the pizza parlor for the board to authorize outdoor dining, as you did last year. The Board of Health and the building inspector will do their work to make sure that any structures on the outside are safe, and the dimensions of the outside work are safe. Or, in the case of parking lots, but Board of Selectmen have to authorize it. I don't see any impediments at all, at this point.
I thought we discussed last week, it was all three, the same Mountain View, Geo's, and Locatina, and I recall, did we approve Casabella's? Well, they already had outdoor dining in their space anyhow. And then we also, I think we had approved Reed's, because they were serving on the, based on the sidewalk, but I don't think they're asking for it this year. So I thought we were going to talk about all three with this outdoor approvals.
I thought we were going to discuss.
Rides, authorized outdoor dining.
Right, for those three locations, same as last year, under the same. Contingent upon proper, you know.
Here's some standards, if you want. Basically, I don't, I've read the standards, the most recent standards today.
Thank you.
And I don't see any issues for the town.
If the Board of Health is happy with it, would make a motion authorize those three locations subject to all proper certification by Building and Health Department to be able to offer outside dining in the emergency that's certified.
Second it. In further discussion.
You might want to listen to three licenses, so you know.
Locatina, the Hammond House, Geo's Restaurant, and Mountain View.
All in favor?
Hi.
So, budget.
The next part of that is entertainment license.
Oh, yeah, excuse me, entertainment license, just entertainment license? Mm-hmm. You've been through that?
They were not sent out at the end of last year due to COVID. So, nobody right now has a valid entertainment license. I didn't know if you wanted to put any restrictions, or if it's just going to be contingent upon what the state or our local Board of Health says. I mean, we can keep their permits as they are, and just add that language.
Has anyone requested it?
Well, Rich DiMaggio said to me recently, we've got an entertainment license, don't we? I said, no, you don't, you don't have a current one, you had one, but because of COVID.
I don't, I don't think they understand, because I see Casabella advertising on Facebook that they're having, you know, a guitarist and things like, I don't think they understand that they weren't automatically renewed, or something like that, and they didn't come in at all at the end of the year. I know we talked, I sent emails about sending out to the people, and let's get them.
Typically, they hear from us.
Yeah.
Time to renew, but I didn't send it out because of what was going on. We're not going to do it, and so if you want me to send something out to say, you know, respond, and we'll proceed.
Can we have entertainment on the regulations?
Well.
The licenses that you gave us, a couple are expired in December thirty first, twenty nineteen, and a couple of them just. Twenty twenty, yes. I just. First, twenty twenty. They're all, they are all twenty twenty, I know, regardless of the fact that you have a nineteen in there, but they are twenty twenty. And.
Could I make a suggestion, then, that we authorize renewal of these through June thirtieth, and make, basically, put the department in charge of, let's get renewal licenses, applications to us, so we can go ahead, it could be May thirtieth, if you wish, or whatever, but I think it's incumbent upon us, if we didn't let them know, it's a little mea culpa both ways. So we should say, fine, we'll give you till the end of May, but you're going to get paperwork from us to, you know, to make it right for twenty twenty one. Right.
The only thing I noticed in reading the previous contract is that it says that the noise level be controlled by the closing of the doors to the establishment. Well, I don't know how that would affect outdoor noise, and whether we have to put a. That's great.
You're talking about Great Horse specifically.
Most of them said it. Great Horse says it. Well, I will say, the only the only complaints I've received are based on, into Great Horse.
Can I make a suggestion?
But is there a way that we can curtail, or, you know, put a?
It's already in there. Well.
I think the neighbors would be upset if the music was very loud, or.
Yeah, but the line, the language is already in there, so aren't we just?
It says, it says, usually, usually, the license, noise level be controlled by the closing of the doors to the establishment.
Right.
Well, the music is outdoors, what's the closing of the door of the establishment coming into the noise? Excuse me, their outdoor entertainment is specifically says it must end at nine thirty.
Right.
Because they have a, I guess, an acoustic guitarist. Yeah, that's what it says. Live B M, D J's and live B M. On the Great Horse. Other ones, um, Casabella's is D J the live B M. And I don't know if we worked it out, but it.
Jane wants to make a comment.
Um, Lori has had to stop entertainment inside establishments, in a couple of them in town, it's not allowed yet, if they have it outside, it's twenty five feet, it's real strict in what the guidelines are at this point. It doesn't say you can't do it, but it's very strict in how, how you can have it. I don't know if you want to review it with Lori first, before we send anything out, or, I don't know, that would be my suggestion.
Well, she is, she has told them not to have outside, not to have entertainment.
Inside.
Inside, inside entertainment, yes.
And what about outside?
Outside, it has to be twenty five feet, I'd have to review the, each regulation, but I know it's twenty, anybody that's singing, or a wind instrument, it has to be twenty five feet, it's very specific in what it's allowing so far. I can't say that tomorrow it's going to change, but right now.
Because of the COVID regulations.
Correct, yes.
So.
It would seem appropriate to worry the duties, to make it less, and to.
I agree.
Address noise, I would think, because if it's outdoors, how is she going to control the noise at all, or what does she do? That's not her family.
Well, the noise has been, is in every license already, I see it under Casabella, I see it on the Great Horse, I see it written on their licenses. So, but I think you're right, we need to get Lori's opinion about the, how the current COVID status affects any entertainment renewals. Maybe it's more appropriate, have we heard from any restaurants or venues asking for their entertainment license, or just Richie?
No, Richard's the only one who thought that he had that already.
Perhaps Lori could draft a letter, we could send out the current entertainment license holders, you know, and making, putting them on notices, these are the current regulations.
So Lori's, yeah, Lori can put a detailed list, or, or, what are our list of requirements, or mandates? If you want to go ahead with, did you say through Baker first, John?
Although I'm concerned, I'm concerned that if we do that, we're giving carte blanche to go ahead with it.
Right.
I would rather have Lori inform than what they're, what they have to get done first.
Lori's going to send them a letter with the regulations, and then they have to apply to us.
Right. And there is a separate one, although it's in here, the Sunday one, you've got that.
Yeah, I just put that in there, so you can understand.
And I'm sorry I was late to the meeting, is it the same thing with outdoor dining? Is they, they apply to Lori for, or to the Health Department for their out diet, outside dining, because the regulations on that, too?
I think our motion was to allow it, as long as they satisfy, satisfy all Health Department and planning, building regulations, building department regulations.
Okay.
So if Wendell and Lori both sign off on it? Is that correct, Don?
Yeah.
And what about A B C C, too? Do they not have, like, a stipulation on the amount of tables you can have?
Whatever was last year, I don't believe A C B C C really changed their part from what they said last year.
No, they're fine.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Yeah, if they were good last year, they're.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Budget and Warren.
With regard to the budget, I had a talk with Dick today, and the Advisory Committee is going to take the updated step chart, and they're going to add wages and salaries for fiscal twenty two into the green sheet. Okay? With regard to the warrant, I did add an additional article today, which, in your handout, is Article twenty one. It would provide funding to upgrade the fire department electrical system. Did get three, or the chief did get three bids for the electrical system, and he is on the call right now, if you have any questions.
I had mentioned that, I thought we, first off, I thought we closed the warrant.
We did.
So adding an article would need a motion to open the warrant again.
A selectman could always add.
I understand that, but we would need a motion to open the warrant again. Secondly, I sent out an email, if the board is concerned about getting this done quicker, then July first, when prices could go up again, I think, as I mentioned, the line to line is the way to go. In a week or so, the board can vote to appropriate that money from excess money in other articles, easily funding it and getting this work done in May. There are three, are three lines, select an expense, temporary help, law and claims that can easily fund twenty two thousand.
Sure.
Which gives you ten percent contingency for the low bid, and we're done. And I think, Don, you've made the point, this is dragging on too long. Why wait another two months to July first, when the town meeting money is then available?
Well, I am concerned about the whole process, obviously, and how long it has taken, as John said, and that we didn't know that the electrical would be so exorbitant. I'm interested in why the electrical inspector, that's his title, would all of a sudden find all of these things wrong? Has he just, how often does he do an inspection? Does he do it every year? Does he do it every five years? How can the price get doubled, almost doubled, okay? And just catch us by surprise like that? And it's just all, the whole thing is, I think, concerning relative to process, and.
Chief is on this call, if you want him to answer, but I did meet with Wendell also to ask why we don't have a, a report from the electric inspector. He said, the electric inspector did not do a formal inspection and issue a report. Basically, this was just a volunteer effort, he wasn't paid for it, and he went over and took a look at the system, and then came up with this list that we have of issues.
Okay, so we don't have a real inspection?
No.
We have a list that, a Wimmy went over there and thought this might be helpful. So how do we know this is even accurate, if we appropriate nineteen thousand, or thirty four thousand, or whatever it is?
We do know that some of the things are correct, I B C, Eddie talked about the fact the transfer switch wasn't working, the service is too low, and needs to be upgraded. I think you're right, it'd be good to get a more delineated list of what's been done here.
I have no objection to fixing these things.
Yeah.
You know, we started off with forty seven thousand, five hundred dollars, and then we found out, gee, you can't even plug the damn thing in.
Right.
And then, oh, we got a, not a real report, even though I asked three times for the report, I was never told this. You know, and so now we got this, what should be done, and it should be, could be nineteen thousand, thirty four, so we need a more, we need a more extensive thing. I have no objection to kind of doing transfers and stuff like that, but.
I think that it expedites it, but let's get more. Right, it expedites it, but let's get more surety about what we're spending it on.
Yeah. I, I mean, I can, I can tell you how, how this came about, give you a little background story. I did agree to wire the exhaust system, I took a look at the electrical, realized how bad the electrical was, how underrated the wiring, the conductor size was to go from the generator to the panel, it's fused at a hundred amps, the wiring that's in there is only good for fifty amps. So right there, there's no way I could actually add any load, more load to the service. Realizing how bad it was, this isn't in the feasibility study at all, this is all stuff I discovered on my own. Being a town building, I called the town electrical inspector and asked him if he'd mind stopping by, which he did on a Wednesday evening, and to his disbelief, also, he was shocked at how bad it was, and he provided me with the list of the violations that he wanted corrected. Speaking with Bob, the town administrator, back and forth on the phone, I secured the three bids, and went forward from that, that's how we got to this point.
And is some of this, some of this a combination of things that would be needed to be done for the ventilation to be added, and things to correct current situations? It's a, it's a blend of both?
It's definitely a blend of both, I mean, some of the damage to the service was existing, it's definitely undersized, that's stated in the feasibility study. And the, the generator, I think, is the, the biggest, you know, having it undersized conductors is, is pretty awful.
And how frequently does the electrical inspector?
This is the high business.
From the fire station, or other stations.
You have that?
I have a little bit.
Yeah, this is.
Do you know?
We couldn't open that.
I'm getting a couple of different voices there, I think your question was, how often does electrical inspector inspect the fire department? Was that the question?
Yes, it was.
I don't believe he's ever been up there to inspect the fire station for anything, except for maybe perhaps the addition that went on in the station a couple of years ago, he would have been required to inspect the work that was performed in there, but there's no annual inspections, or anything of that nature.
And did all of these issues that he is raising come up in the Mitchell report?
Not all of them. A few of them did, the damage to the service, and the pipe, the riser pipe outside came up in the Mitchell report, the undersized service came up in the Mitchell report, the disconnect for the generator, no overcurrent protection for the generator, did not come up in the Mitchell report, nor did the undersized conductors feeding the service.
So if we were just to correct the ventilation issue, what would the cost of that be, do you know? If we didn't address the rest of the electrical issues?
So you would, you would, it's, it's hard, because they're, they're actually tied together. The, under, the wires that are undersized feed through the transfer switch from the generator, back to the main electrical panel, so they're all kind of tied together into one system. I guess you, you could probably minus out pulling new wires out to the generator, I don't think the electrical inspector's going to allow that at this point, you would have to have that discussion with him, his major code violation.
So we could ask Gary to attend our next meeting, and maybe, Don, you could run this by the advisory and see how they feel about a request for line to line.
We're going to get a real, we're going to, we're going to get a real inspection.
Report. Perhaps we could also talk to Gary as well, set up a schedule for checking town buildings at the same time, for.
All right, so I'm going to call, talk to the advisory. And you're going to get it, and Bob, you're going to get a real inspection.
Real inspection, yeah.
Do you think the plan for addressing the, the financial though is the way to go?
I think so.
It's quicker, it's much quicker.
Take the article off.
Well, my, my concern only is that unless you fill full picture, then you're sort of, it's sort of like you're getting one dining in, and you'll never get the same story twice. And if, I mean, are, do we think we're going forward with, let's look at the fire department, and see what the future of the fire department is, and is that a building that we want to put a lot of money into, is it not a building that we want to put a lot of money into? Are these things that, you know, I mean, it just seems to me that it's a bigger issue than just, okay, let's, let's find the money someplace. But let me just.
One of the items discussed at the capital improvement committee this afternoon was coming up with some funding for a facilities manager, maybe a part-time facilities manager, maybe we can get the school's facilities manager to do some part-time work here, something along those lines, and responsibility would be to keep track of all the problems in all the buildings, and keep capital committee informed, and keep the selectmen informed.
All right, we'll move on forward, try to get that done before next week. Thank you. So all the things we got on there.
You know, the map, the map is, I sent a copy of the article from the last time the district was created.
Yes.
And perhaps run that by Rose, as to how we can use that as a place, okay, as a template?
Yep, so, did you, you all got my email?
Yes.
Okay. So.
About?
The.
About what, Don?
It's a small loose end, a large loose end.
Oh, yes.
So I'm on small loose ends, okay? So the selectmen, we're not going to do it, we're going to keep the salary the same, a COLA, no COLA for us, okay? Assessors, it's up to them what they want to do, with their COLA, whether they want to do their COLA or not. The highway, like I told them, that, that's a contract, that's a contract, they've got a contract, so those numbers are good, just to put those in. The tree warden is interesting. He has a contract through June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, which sets his salary at six thousand, two thirty six, or F Y twenty two, but last year, we already paid him six thousand, three hundred. Which is sixty four dollars less than what it would be this year, so I mean, you want to just, you know, sixty three dollars a year difference.
Yeah, is that the difference between a half percent, was it three percent, or two and a half percent? We see a copy of that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, I don't know.
So he was paid more this year, or last year?
Yeah.
That was a three percent bump, out of two and a half.
So he got.
No, I read that, no, I'm saying, I thought it was a three percent out of two and a half percent.
Well, his contract says that this year, he should get six thousand, two thirty six. He's put in for six thousand, three hundred.
Was that?
Last year was six thousand, three hundred.
But was that including mileage and stuff, or was that just the salary?
That was the salary. Six dollars, three hundred, so this year, he should get six thousand, two thirty six, which is sixty four dollars less than he got paid last year. So.
In other Collins study that are being paid, Collins study said, what is happening with them, is there any of those?
They're getting.
They're getting.
They're leveled.
Level plus one and a half, plus the COLA.
Plus the COLA.
They are redlined.
Right. So it's.
I'm simply put on, it's nothing, but it should be.
Right, so I got to, to see what the budget was to do there. All right, the fire department, they didn't, when we talked to the advisory, we didn't have the firefighters, they weren't on, they weren't on the Collins there. So the fire supervisor, Collins recommended twenty six dollars, he's being currently paid twenty four ninety one. So the question is, we want to ask the budget to go to the twenty six dollars.
Your thing says twenty seven, twenty five.
Yeah, that, uh. Ed, Ed, Ed corrected.
Oh, okay.
Ed corrected, it's twenty four ninety one, exactly.
And Collins recommends twenty six.
I did bad math.
Okay.
Collins had recommended twenty six, he's getting twenty four ninety, or she's getting twenty four ninety one.
And is the twenty sixth the median, or do they just do one's own?
They just said what they recommend, that's the median, yeah.
And for the other people on the Collins side, you put the math the median?
Right.
So. Again, be consistent.
Give me, give me your system, and move that to twenty six. All right, and then on the firefighter E M Ts, the Collins recommended twenty two dollars, and they're currently getting twenty two fifty two.
Believe them, don't leave them.
So they get one.
So leave them at the fifty two, and don't.
Twenty two fifty two.
Right. And at some point, it'll catch up.
It'll catch up. All right, and then the officers have a stipend.
Yeah, so they stay a lot.
The stipend stays the same. Okay, and then the chief, we put in for salary.
When's the stipend, they just get it once, or they get it every year?
Every year.
They get it every year, but it's the same amount.
Okay.
I think it was a twenty five hundred for one.
The deputy was there, the.
Is the chief still up? He's not.
I see Pat on there.
Pat is.
Yeah.
So. So they don't get a salary increase, or they're.
I'm, I'm still on.
Okay.
How does this work?
What is, what is the stip, what is the stipend, chief?
So it's a ten thousand dollar stipend, and, and it's broken up between the officers. Throughout the year, certain ones take on other roles asked above and beyond EMS coordinator, or certain projects they're running with, and it's divvied up that way between them, whoever's taking on the most projects.
You're not looking for a bump, you're not looking for a bump for any stipends for that, right?
No, not this time.
All right.
And the water district is a contracted service.
That's a contracted service.
Right.
So the COLA just applies to the salary, right?
Right.
Right.
The chief has a salary, he gets a COLA.
Ask him, how do you want it?
You want your COLA?
I'll, I'll take whatever you're handing out.
All right. Water district, that one, that's a salary, that's a contract, eight thousand dollars, so we don't have to do it. The management.
Well, that was kind of my email about their, you know, A, going forward, who's running the rave system, obviously, Bob will still doing the town announcements, but in terms of like when we used to do, they talked about the, the Blackboard Connect, how we used to, you know, log into the police and put your number in, is that something that dispatch is going to be in charge of that part, so should be beyond their system? Did see the response from, you know, Tony, that we could stay with rave, and that's good for what Bob does, but is that good when you and I would put our number in, you know, we go into the police, you know, website, put our number in for emergency contact? Is that going to work, or so is what we're going to keep two systems, basically? Is that the right thing to do? If you level funded, if you level funded the money we have now, that would more than cover the amount of Blackboard. So you have a couple of months to let Scott work it out with Tony, if you wish, and get a recommendation from the chief.
Right.
Especially, but do you want to take down the twenty nine hundred, at least bring it down, maybe six thousand? And, because that would allow you to buy supplies as well, which also come out. Yeah. Since we're taking this.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you could drop it down. So you could drop it down to five or six instead, yeah.
Well, uh, I'm hopeful, what is, is, is he doing more than he would have been doing at twenty-nine hundred? I mean, why wouldn't you go to six thousand? Why wouldn't you go to any other number? Yeah, from eight thousand.
No, eight thousand covered the cost of the software, plus the salary. Right, that's not.
Lower by twenty-nine hundred.
Oh, I missed the word by.
Yeah, no, see, it's, it's, you have to lease the soft, you have to lease the software every year, right? So what are we gonna put it in at five, you think, or?
Five, five hundred? Five thousand?
Sure.
But Tony recommended staying with rave for one more year.
Yeah, but I mean, so they're gonna run both, so people are gonna log in, keep their number, make sure they migrate it over.
Yeah.
We can do that, but I still think that's something Scott should like make the calls on his part. I mean, Bob, you probably don't care if you use Blackboard or Rave for your messages and I have to say, I thought Blackboard was a lot.
It's much better.
Yeah.
Much better.
Yeah. That rave was a pain.
It is. I, I finally learned how to do it, but I mean, it's, it's these complicated steps.
Yeah.
And uh you get the same result as you do with Blackboard, which is much simpler.
Yeah.
Alright, now we're on to the large loose ends.
Change to a different font, one second.
But this is the water project, the, the water project. I guess the first thing is that, that uh. I, they gave us three quotes. Uh, five hundred and ninety thousand to do the four affected houses. Six hundred and thirty thousand to do the four affected houses plus the fire station. And four hundred, excuse me, six hundred and seventy thousand for the four affected houses, the fire station and the town.
Obviously, the bulk of the money is just getting the water down the street, then if you run another hose, another hose.
My question is, do we wanna do the full monty or in the hopes that we get, in the hopes that we get the rescue money or?
Well, I think the difference in, in Bob is more of an extra to this, the eighty thousand dollar difference. Rescue money, if it shows up, is more than adequate to offset this. And I think if you're gonna dig a hole, dig the right size hole.
And tomorrow, if you have an opportunity, I sent you uh an email with this program that the MMA is sponsoring. That's gonna dig deep into what the American uh Rescue Act. Uh, is going to allow and what, what will not be permitted, so it's worth everybody.
But this is money that's already been appropriated by Congress, this is like, and we've been given an amount of.
That's right. One million five hundred thousand and change. So the question is, can we use it for, for this purpose? I think the answer is absolutely yes.
And so the warrant article would be to raise an appropriate borrow contingent upon.
Right, basically, you know, you don't have to spend it if the money doesn't come through from the Rescue Act. You know.
And.
What about, what about the um, the townhouse?
Well, so far, we're getting, we're getting, yeah, our water reports are good as a public water supply. Now, the one advantage of, you say that, it's one less testing requirement. If we take this off the public water supply, so to speak, we have to have that tested on, on a basis and that'd be less work, if you will. For a person, so there is an advantage to it. It certainly looks, Bob, I guess, every connection is forty thousand dollars. So if you had a warrant article of seven fifty, you would cover this and a little extra for contingency. One concern we had, and we heard this from Peter as well. Look, the Rescue Act is coming out, that means there's gonna be a lot of guys out there with a lot of work. And the longer we wait, the chances of finding somebody willing to do the work might diminish. You know, you want a contractor that puts a new addition on your house, pretty soon, you're not gonna find a guy.
And it's not clear that we have to wait until July one for Rescue Act monies. Soon as we get the regs from, from Washington. Uh, the, 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 the money has been made available to the town, I think we can move forward.
Right, but we wouldn't have town meeting authorization until July first unless we had a special town meeting in the middle of it. You know, we wouldn't have authorization to spend it, any money. It, it's a bit of a concern, that's why, you know, with like the fire station, we're gonna pick up two months if we do the May first thing and get that moving right along.
I drink town water every day, my hands just shake a little bit.
I'll defer to Bob, you know, he wants to talk to the time bond and say, they had, I think they had a contingency in that number already.
Yes.
Yeah.
And have the property on it, like, is this something? Who has agreed to the solution or?
Well, they, they, we have contracts with the property owners that are served by the wells now. And their contract is that the town will provide them clean water. Whether we drove it in by truck, brought it in by this pipe or the well. We have an agreement, I believe, that we are gonna make every effort to bring this to town meeting to solve this issue. And I see that they just got sold, didn't they?
Yes.
I saw people moving in, yeah.
So, so we, so. Do we, does the agreement say that? If we do this, is this the end of this issue or can they do further?
Well, I mean, all they want is clean water, that's their thing, if it meets the, if it meets the standard, they don't need anymore. The contracts also say it's uh ordinary use, that is, they shouldn't put in the in-ground infinity pool and expect us to fill it. It is, Don, to your other question, to your other question, if you look at the kind, I believe it says, and successor.
Yeah, but it runs through the land.
So runs through the land, different than the water district.
Okay, fire station, now we're on the uh.
We still need that map thing done.
The warrant article, the water expansion, we just have to get the maps on.
Yeah, and whatever language that is, yeah. We haven't bud roast much lately, I'm sure she'll.
No, I've talked to her about it and she said, well, I need to know the dimensions and we can draw the map, we can draw the.
Assessors.
Illegal, yeah.
But you're right, that's why, go back to Don's point, including the parcel of the town hall. Even if we didn't connect, let's put the parcel on the difference. You don't have to go up to forty-four North though, that's fine, just, I mean, just to the townhouse area.
I can't even find a plumber to take care of the leak in my rental property in my footwater supply. I kinda keep telling, I can't take a shower, I can't go to the wife.
Can you anymore?
No. Alright, what assurance, okay, then uh now we're on the highway garage, so three hundred thousand, I mean, is that good? Is it a good?
Well, they're concerned, they were looking for a uh decision from the board to go ahead and get the steel and. You know, and lock that in, so they're still kind of waiting. I think uh Larry is waiting for a call from, from Bob. Look, do you want me to go ahead and jump on the steel now, lock it in so we're not seeing a, a bump?
You approve, I'll do it tomorrow because I know he's anxious.
What do we do with the steel if the town meeting says?
Sell it.
Sell it, yeah. Will it be worth more than we bought it for? I gotta tell you, I'm seeing the same, I'm, I'm seeing the same thing at work, oh, they had, he had that planned out, I think.
Yep. Mark said we could, they can take care of it. And Larry actually told us that, so I don't know if Larry was planning to take care of it or whether he was gonna bring it down to the highway.
I think he go, he and Mark discussed an area to keep it in.
How much deal is it?
This is, it's the flats mostly, isn't it?
How, how, how much cost was?
A little less than a hundred, I thought.
Yeah, I thought it was an eighty range or something like that.
So it's not like the whole two thirty?
Oh, no.
No, no, no.
Well, we have two seventy-five approximately left.
You know, it's door up there?
Yeah.
Lock the gate, and the police go by every night. Put a white car out there. Who was it before?
Do. So you could argue it's in the taxpayers' interest to do this. Could argue that it's in the taxpayer's interest to do this.
If you can get rid of it and, and it.
Because we can always get rid of it.
That's what they say about everything, you know, the car won't last you forever.
These are ride beams and, and they're interchangeable for other projects, so.
And with this, and with the Rescue Act going along, people are gonna be looking for this and it's gonna be even shorter supply.
I don't think so, I only own a construction project.
Yeah, you know, beams are gonna need her for a couple of bridges and nothing like this, yeah.
Do you have a motion?
Technically, we don't, we, we have a motion to spend three hundred thousand on the highway addition already. If the town administrator deems it proper to expend that money, the town meeting has already voted to appropriate that money for the expansion.
Okay, so let's say we buy the steel. And uh, we have this, we're, we're estimating again three hundred thousand for the.
Keep tightening that up, keep tightening that up, now, Larry, now we have the steel in hand, locked in. Is this gonna change your number going forward? You know, make sure he gets that number so we come forward.
And that would be a, a, a bond again?
I don't think it wasn't a bond last time, Dick was able to fold it into the tax. Our levy is still pretty low compared to what we can.
So we're gonna, we're gonna buy the steel, then we're gonna go to the town meeting, this is the timeline, then we're gonna go to the town meeting and say this, the project is no longer three hundred thousand. It's maybe six hundred thousand. Um, and the town is gonna vote, if the town votes yes, we have the steel and we go forward, the town votes no, we have to sell the steel. Or do something with this deal.
Right, or come back at, or come back another town meeting asking for another.
Larry seemed confident that if we purchase the steel and somehow the project gets failed. That we can dispose of the steel probably at a pro.
And who seems confident, you or some, who did you say was confident in this?
Larry Tuttles, he's the architect designer.
But he's the same one that said we could do this project for three hundred thousand, you know? I mean, I don't wanna be pointing out someone's errors, but because, you know, you're, you're victim of the circumstances, I'm sure.
Exactly, I mean, everything people said before the COVID hit is, that whole dynamic changed in every way.
Well.
So I feel confident Bob Marshall doing the right.
So this is why we have a town minister.
Other than the next thing, academy of all paintings, stop the steel.
Uh, we have the two contractors. Uh, zoomed in and we agreed to take this one first, this is the higher price. Um, but they're here to answer any questions.
SNL paintings.
Do you have any other copies?
Is this ten percent off residential, commercial count for us?
Are you here SNL?
This is Gus.
Gus.
Unmute Gus.
What's the number?
But that's where we're, our biggest concern is about the lead, lead paint.
Um, oh, first thing that I, that I need to know, I'm, uh, when I, when I open the estimate, I didn't run a test yet. But I have to, um, I'm not sure if he, I have a question, is it lead? Are, are you guys, did you guys run a test already?
And I have that paperwork in file. And they were supposed to remediate when they did the paint job and they had surrounded it.
I have to say, it looked like when I went through town reports, I saw it was painted for like eight thousand dollars, maybe twenty something years ago. And I'd have to think, knowing how lead has been in the forefront, Bob, for thirty, forty years, that it would have been remediated at that time. They wouldn't have just slapped another coat on top of it. So if this was not painted for fifty or sixty years, I would have that concern, correct?
So you, you, Pam, you seem to think it's true.
It was remediated when they did the job, yes. You know, we can certainly look at the paperwork between now and awarding, but. I do have that information.
Well, there'll be a lot of scraping, so if uh.
Yeah.
Oh, if there's a lead issue, it becomes a hazard.
So is this, is this, I'm saying this, our responsibility to determine this lead thing here, is that what you just said, or did I misunderstand?
That's what I got from it, yeah.
Well, I could, I could run a test, I mean, I'm, I'm a, a less safe renovator, um. I have uh the certificate, so I could, I, I'm able to, to run a test uh to make, to see, you know, if there is lead in. Any uh of the area that, that needs to be scraping. So far, I remember um entire building, entire building looks like needs to be scraping. If, if the lead is in there, that means we have to cover up to twenty feet from the ground until we put, you know. Uh, to take all the chips, then we're gonna mask the windows to make sure not, not dust to get in inside, then um. Uh, if there is lead, I cannot pressure wash it, which most of my projects, I pressure wash it to make sure, I know. Any moldy ruin to kill it, but if there's lead, I cannot do it, which is, I'm just gonna be scraping it. Um, but like I say, um, we have to cover the windows, I have to cover up to twenty feet of the ground. And then uh we gotta put safety, safety uh line around to make sure there's no uh any people uh walking, you know. Um, and I remember there is a, a house, um, I think it's uh the, the left side of the building. There's a hu- house uh. And I assuming there's people living there. So if that's the case, um, we have to uh put uh something to cover, to make sure, you know, we. That, to make sure there is not any pieces of, of the lead paint uh flying to the, to the garden, you know.
Yeah, I, I agree with all that, but I think we would have thought in your quote, that you would have made that determination prior to quoting, because honestly. That number is going to, I wanna say triple, if you're doing all that work for lead remediation, I would have thought. You would have determined either by taking the chips to a bite or something like that, whether or not there was lead in this, not just. Walking around the outside and, yeah, it's this much paint. I kind of thought it was soup and nuts with your quote, you would already determined that lead was not applicable, not putting it on us.
Well, alright, um, I, like I say, I could run the test. I didn't, um, the time that I came and to see the project, I didn't, you know, I, I didn't assume, you know. But I could, I still could run a test to see, I could, then um. I just keep the same, the same price, you know, I just give the same price, but I'm just. I'm, I'm just wanna make sure, you know, there is any, in, 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 any lead on any side of, of the, of the spots that need to be scraping.
Yes, but if you haven't determined if there's lead there yet, then the quote that you gave us is not an accurate one, right? You don't have all the information.
And certainly.
Have to determine if there's lead and then you would have to, I would assume, revise this quote, is that correct?
Yeah, 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 exactly.
And I can't tell from the other guy whether he made, is the other chap on and just ask?
Thank you, Mr.
Well, one, one question, you're gonna spray and, and back brush?
Yeah, uh, well, what we do, it's for this type of uh projects, when the scraping is, you know, this type of house is kind of old, so. So um, they call it like um, um, the chips. It's really, it's really uh thick, so in order to, to get that quality, you know, kind of. Good, smooth, smoothly uh the black, the boards, so we have to spray it, our primer, I use A one hundred, oil-based primer. But we lower our pressure, depending on the area that we're gonna be working, um, like I say, this, in this building, there is a. There's a house very uh close to the building, so we lower the pressure machine, then we spray it, then we back brush it. You know, our, our primer, then our, our first coat of finish paint, we do the same process. Then, then we give another coat, we give, we, we give two coats. Then our second coat, it just lightly spray it to make sure, you know, give that consistent, consistency, to make sure uh looks kind of smooth.
See, Pop, you're drawing on your, your high school experience.
College too.
There you go. Um, Mr. Chair, I would say, somebody's gonna have to run a test on that paint. And I'd recommend we keep the article on, but we don't have a number that I can feel comfortable with.
Thank you, Mr.
Chair.
Talked to the other contractor, but we're gonna have to run a test on the.
Unless he know, unless he found out. Unless the other guy found out, and that'd be great.
Other one, I'll, I'll bring it up. Uh, he actually sent me an electronic file.
But he joined the meeting as well.
Yeah, he's at, he's in the meeting, so here, here's your.
So the question, our question is lead paint.
This is Sean Cantwell. His quote is right here.
Yeah, hey, Bob.
Does the Cantwell leave, did he test for lead, you know, if there's lead there?
I do not, I, I, I did not take a sample with me and have it tested, so. I was listening to the other gentleman's conversation as well. I'm lead certified, same, I'm in the same boat, so. I assumed it wasn't lead, to be honest with you, cuz you, I, you did mention it was painted before, so.
All right.
So I can have that tested.
Is it customary to opt for lead paint when you're doing, when you bid a project?
Uh, no, not necessarily. Um. It, we usually go through the, that pro, that next step, if, you know, you were gonna get hired, I, I suppose, so. Being, being a commercial building, I thought maybe you guys had that information already. So.
Sean, would that change your estimate as well? A lot more work.
Uh, it would not, yeah, um, you know, it wa, it really wouldn't. Um, I, I incorporated the price for boom lift regardless. I was listening to the other gentleman and to kinda piggyback off of, you know, his references, you know, he's exactly right. We do the same process as far as containing the lead chips. I feel comfortable with the, uh, the amount for material I, I quoted you for, for as far as using tape and plastic and stuff. So to answer your question, I don't see that price really changing.
Can we ask him, Sean, to get a test on and get it back to us this week? And we'll probably cost it a test, you know, expenses.
Did you hear that, Sean?
Yes, yeah, absolutely, guys, yep.
Certified, so.
Yep.
So could you get it tested?
Hello?
Guys, you talking to me, Bob?
We're, we're, we're looking to have, have the paint, the, the existing paint tested for lead.
Yes, yep, I will, I will, uh, take care of that.
And then the board's gonna make a decision.
Okay.
What happened to Zenetti?
I asked two other contractors to bid and they chose not to, or else maybe they looked at the building and decided.
All right, Sean, so this week, you think you can get a chance to do that?
Yeah, either tomorrow or Thursday, I can grab some samples, get the test out for you and, uh. We'll have a definitive answer hopefully by Friday or so, latest Monday.
Okay.
Well, we, we meet every Monday, so by Monday would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you can email the result to me or, or just bring in if it's, it's on paper.
Okay, very good. Thank you, everyone. Yep.
The next item is the Conservation Commission.
Uh, I've asked the commission to come into the meeting and there's Ted. I don't know if other members.
There we go.
I'm here.
I saw Judy.
Judy, yeah.
I saw Bonnie.
What's up over in conservation?
You guys should have a long list from us.
We sent you a summary.
Ted, you get a lot of work.
We got a lot of stuff going on.
Yep.
Bonnie, you're still on mute.
Wanna run down the real, the list real quick for our listening audience?
Okay. The most recent projects are one at Zero Minute Road, that's a proposal for a subdivision. It's currently on hold. Uh, the delineations were approved, but nothing advanced after that. Uh, the Hammond Solar LLC at the, um, uh, dump. Uh, the, all the delineations and negotiations with us are finished, but they're still negotiating with Natural Heritage. About how, how they're gonna deal with the mitigation for, um, using land that's in, uh. In a, a natural heritage polygon. So they have to make up for that. I think they were gonna put some land under conservation restriction, but I haven't heard anything about that since. Rockwell Pond has a huge, uh, pond reconstruction project going on, and while it was down, they decided. They needed to repair the dam, so now they're repairing the dam in another month or so, that will probably be closed out. They're moving along. They have the, uh, stream redirected around the whole project for the moment. And, um, South Road, uh, parcel number two four is, used to be owned by Ryan Morton and is now owned by the Conways. And they're building a house up on the hill. And so there were issues with, um, the whole front in front of the stream. There is, uh, Meadow and Marsh and. They had to also build a bridge to get over the stream and they have to have, uh, electrical put in up to the property without going. Intruding into the marsh, so it's been a, a complicated project, but it's all, uh, essentially approved now. They're just, uh. Waiting for spring, I think, so that they can manage to do the building. They have, um, silk fence up to exclude turtles. And those are the major ones. Uh, other determinations we made were at ten South Road, uh, was an RDA for, um. Clearing out some landscape brush and things along the riverfront and, uh, some long-term projects with a pool and moving a shed. And taking down some trees and, um, all of that was approved with, uh, some conditions. And one thirty-one Stony Hill Road, uh, is getting a gas line installed and that will go through some, um. A resource area, so that, that's been approved. Uh, as a, as a negative determination. Uh, Village Food Mart, uh, is getting a new leach field and that'll be. At the meeting on April twenty-first, along with, uh, lots four one and three three on Glendale Road. Where they're going to move the house and they need the delineations approved. One seventy Wilberham Road, uh, the new owners want to turn, uh, most of the property into a small fruit farm and retail. Project and it's pretty complicated cuz they have a, they have a river running through the middle, uh, so they'll probably be back in the spring. And Mark Kibbe, uh, wants to move, uh, four kilns from where. Uh, onto his parents' property at two twenty-nine Summers Road and move, uh, another kiln from his property to that property. It will be in an area that's not under our jurisdiction, but, uh, getting a road in that the trucks can traverse. And, uh, getting power has been an issue. I think, uh, he solved the power issue, but we're still. Working on dealing with the road, which runs right along the edge of the river and is too close to be a commercial road, so. I'm not quite sure how that's gonna get resolved. He will be, uh, filing an NOI. And, uh, ninety-five Martin Farms Road and two fifty-two Scandic Road both have, uh, gotten letters of, um. Cease and desist, asking them to, um, come to us over some things that they were doing that are outside regulations. And two long-term cases, three oh eight Summers Road is, uh, Mr. Carver's property. He'd done some. Work in a riverfront and, uh, was sent to violation by the state, uh, several years back. Uh, now he wants to sell the property, so he's gonna be doing a restoration there. And rear Summers Road, which is Borrego, um, was approved by us, um. In twenty nineteen. And they didn't like the twenty-three conditions, so they went to the state. And, uh, the state has been fighting with them ever since. They recently issued a new superseding order of conditions. And it has fifty-six orders, so I don't think they did very well for themselves. And, uh. My understanding is that the conditions have all been signed and they should be getting ready to build soon. Ted, is there anything you wanna add?
Nothing that I know of, Judy. I think that's, um. All of it.
Any comments, questions from the board?
Well, thank you for your service. Thank you for the work.
You're welcome.
You certainly seem busy.
Yes, it's been busy. We've gone to two meetings a month because there are so many cases right now. I think people coming out of the pandemic are anxious to do stuff.
Just like the buildings.
Yeah, if you go around town, you can see the construction vehicles everywhere. And by the way, one thing we did not get involved with recently, but that was spotted, there were some people doing some kind of survey work at the Old Cumbes, uh, last week. So maybe something's happening there.
And, uh, now that, uh, Bonnie is working every day, uh, the board seems to have caught up. And I'm no longer getting calls from those who wanna submit an application or have submitted and, and are not seeing any action, so. I think they've really caught up on the backlog and are functioning very effectively now.
Bonnie, do you wanna say anything?
All right, thank you.
Quickly, anybody up this year? I know we're doing appointments soon.
Oh, we have two, um, new associates, uh, Randall Revest and, uh, Gregory DeGastino. Uh, they're attending meetings. Usually we ask them to be associates for a while until they get comfortable with the rules and everything. And then we would be sending a request if they're still interested.
Right, but are there any of your members that are appointed through, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one that we need to?
I don't know.
I don't either. We don't keep track. We thought you guys kept track.
All right, you're a lifetime, Ted, that's fine. And you too.
Bonnie, do you know?
Bonnie, Bonnie disappeared. She's not on now.
I can see your head.
Research it.
I have, I have the list on my desktop, not on this one.
Thank you again.
I think everybody's willing to continue at the moment.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We did fire department ventilations.
Three eighty-one shape and where's that?
Order health variance, three eighty-one shape.
It's your, it's your motion.
It's a reduction in separation between the septic system and high groundwater from four feet to three feet. And of course, that's recommended by.
Where is three eighty-one shape? No, who's the applicant?
I don't, I don't have that information. It's down in the office.
Nobody has the paperwork?
Yeah, we have the paperwork.
I don't have any paperwork.
Didn't that house that was moved, was it?
Oh, boy, I don't know.
This is more to health thing, right?
All right, well, I'll make the motion in a second. I'll make the motion to approve the, uh, request for reduction separation as recommended by the health agent. And it's remote. All in favor?
Oh, all those in favor?
It's an update.
Oh, nice.
All right, selectmen's report, any correspondence?
Did, did we respond to?
Fake mail.
Did you hear the latest on the, uh, on the dog, uh, situation, the dog hearing?
No, no, I, I did send an email to, uh, Shelley though, asking about, and I wanted to have a, uh. Dog day afternoon type thing with the three dog things in one night.
I've got a dog report in my reports.
Excellent.
Oh, thank you.
I just added them today.
Selectmen's reports.
Uh, basically, planning, we have a busy meeting for, uh, again, obviously, the landfill is a, a subject of discussion. I know that, uh, Steve, I think, has requested a conversation with Bob going forward, but I think, as, uh, conservation has said. They're going through the boxes, just like National Heritage. And I think we have it before us about the conservation restrictions to basically trade some town land for that land, you know?
I did send something down to the state on that.
Okay.
As requested.
Okay, they have a couple of parcels and.
Yes.
Yeah, in mind. Uh, planning board is extremely busy, just like conservation. It's, I think, the nature of the beast right now, with people just getting projects going forward.
Anything else?
No, I, I was just interested if Mr. Franklin, anything else about the, um, the health agent and the regional.
Uh, we did not have a meeting this past week because, uh, Eric Weiss, uh, has a death in the family. But we should, uh, be back on track with that, uh, next week.
Administration's report.
Okay, I've added a couple of things since, uh, what you received on Friday. Uh, I did call Mary Icardi, uh, to ask about half steps, which was brought out and I think by John in. Our recent budget meeting, uh, she has not returned my call yet. I, I don't think I imagined that.
No, I think we're done, but that's why, yeah, a half, starting at the half year.
Whether or not, yeah. Half step makes sense.
Okay.
All right, okay. I did get a call from Susan West. By the way, she's calling every week faithfully. And, uh, they're still looking for another location. However, they have upgraded their staff training. And, uh, adopted new protocols for handling difficult residents, so.
How about keeping the windows closed?
It seems as though they are making an effort here.
I talked to people on the street and, and also called Sue after the first week because she hadn't gotten in by the Friday, she was on Monday. Um, but they seem to see a difference and are, you know, not having the same problem that they had before and are optimistic that it will.
And I also, yeah, speaking of dogs, I also talked with the gentleman that you referred me to. I also talked to Shelley. We have. Shelley and I discussed a way to work through this. Uh, the problem is going to be completely resolved by the end of the month. One of the parties is leaving town. With the dog.
In the street or? Well, we have the hearing on?
No, oh, no, this is a different, oh, this is. But this, by the way, this is an ongoing situation.
Prior one.
Yeah.
We had a hearing on that last year, I believe.
This is an ongoing situation, so. Well, we did do another conference with Ty and Bond, uh, report released, you've seen it, you've had a cap, a copy of it. Capital Committee met today. We're hoping to get a five-year plan, uh, within a reasonable amount of time. We spent the time today with, uh, Becky talking about. We spent the time today with, uh, Becky talking about, uh, the senior center project. And we also, as I said, uh, looked at, uh, prospects for having a facilities manager for the town. Uh, we were informed that the town did have someone doing this kind of work a while back and, uh, person retired, isn't it? And so, uh, this would make a lot of sense, uh, i- if we can. Identify someone who can do it part-time. For example, uh, we probably would have learned much earlier that the, the electrical system at the fire department needs attention. Uh, we would learn about other problems that we don't find out about until something happens.
I, I think it's a twofold thing, we've, I think, Don, you and I have talked about this, that it should be, you have a maintenance person, but you have inspection, I think it should be incumbent on the building department. To do the inspections of municipal buildings, then it comes back to us, how do you want to solve them, do you want to have somebody. Budgeted for three, five, six hours a week to handle maintenance. But I think since we have inspectors that work for us, they should do that inspection work for all different requirements, okay? I'm happy to, I'll bring that forth to the building departments, my liaison role, and bring a report back to the board.
And I'm gonna call around to see if, uh, any of the other communities.
Yeah, for maintenance guy.
Or, for that matter, the regional school system has someone that they could share.
Meeting tomorrow.
We, uh, we had a meeting this afternoon regarding the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board, couple suggestions that came out of that as well, uh. There's still, uh, a fair amount of involvement by towns, particularly east of the river. In trying to get some reforms here implemented and, uh, make some, make some changes in personnel. So that the funds that the towns contribute and the funds that our employees contribute. Are not, uh, spent lavishly or carelessly. Uh, we have a department's meeting tomorrow. Uh, expect to hear more reaction on the Collins Plan. Also, video conference was held with Amoresco people, we are now at a point where the planning board will have one more meeting, this is, uh. It's actually the third part of their hearing, uh, and it is hoped that they're going to be wrapped up. At the end of this particular session. Uh, remaining issue does not have, I think, the fire department issue has been. Heard and, uh, I don't expect that, uh, that's gonna be an obstacle to, uh, closing the hearing and, and casting a vote. Uh, they're still at some point, uh, trying to work something out with, uh, the highway department, and it's a space thing, so. That's where they are.
Material storage.
Yeah, also, uh, we're trying to encourage boards and committees, uh, to transition. Back to partial in, in-person sessions in this room and also with Zoom. I did provide a training for them last Wednesday, we had a reasonably good turnout, don't you think, Pam?
Well.
I mean, it was frankly more people than I expected.
Well, for, for those of us who really will, you know, it'll, it'll matter to.
I mean, this is gonna take some time for everyone to learn how to. Do, it's not, it's not complicated, it's just tedious, it's just a lot of steps you have to take.
I could have to say, you know, I, I have heard enough of the minutes of, uh, the planning board and. I have to speak in Joanne's defense, trying to run the meeting.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
And make sure the information is given to all the board members and to keep all that kind of floating and, uh, working on Zoom, I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be very difficult.
Chairman of the board wants the town to go out and find some high school students, uh. Who can do what I guess they do in a lot of towns, and that is, uh, as part of their training or education. Uh, come over and run. The video conferencing system during meetings.
I'd like to request, reach out to Minnie Togg and see if there's somebody there.
Although it's been my experience that, um, encouraging people to do it is not, is not always the most effective way, and sometimes you have to mandate that this is what we're doing. Um, I, I didn't want to get a board at my school either until they said, you will learn this.
Yeah, well, yeah, I agree.
When I did it, I said, okay, I'm here, so, but I do think you can get tech kids, kids are, but I don't know, and I think you can get them like this.
Oh, I think you're right, I think it's training and then a mandate, I'm not sure that I have the authority to mandate in certain instances in certain elected boards. Over time, I think we could make progress there. I did provide a special training this morning for, uh, the chair of the Capitol Planning Committee and she is committed to, uh. Forming the, uh, agenda, posting the agenda online, I gave her an account, uh, to use for the town's website. And also, uh, figuring out how to, I mean, running, running the Zoom conference and so forth. And I think, uh, I said, I'll help you the next time, but then I think one more time and I think she'll be ready to do it all, all alone. Uh, there's another regional veterans district meeting on the 21st, uh, I provide Zoom support for that too. There's controversy in Munson, uh, where they have recently withdrawn from the district. Uh, there's controversy between a former administrator in Munson and Mr. Cumber. I don't know where that's going to go, but, uh, this is the third meeting where that's, uh, the main topic.
Will that affect our, uh, numbers for the budget?
It will, yes.
Well, will we know that before town meeting?
I don't know, I know that they were looking to recon, as soon as the, the Munson withdrew, they were. Uh, Rick said, let's reconfigure, I don't have any numbers yet.
I mean, when Holland dropped out, being such a small part, it really didn't affect us much, Munson being much bigger player.
It's gonna make a difference.
Yeah.
Also. Although I communicated to this, to the state office that the town does not have. An interest in which union represents our police patrolmen, uh, they did encourage me to join their meeting. And I learned in the meeting that, uh, the patrolmen are asking, uh, to incorporate the new reserve officers. Not the new ones, the reserve officers, uh, and particularly the newly trained reserve officers into the union. I had a meeting with the chief of police about that, he is very much opposed to that, I indicated that, that we're going to be opposed, the main hearing is coming on, on the fifth. What, what does that have to do with some changing union? Nothing, but if, if a new union is certified, and the question is, what's the membership? So, the existing police patrolman, uh, union, uh, I guess, has said, even before this certification thing, that they wanted to incorporate. Reserve officers, particularly as, after the, uh, the new legislation that requires an upgrading of the qualifications. Or reserve officers, bringing them basically to the same level. So are they dumping your old union because they won't, they only want to bring the reserve officers? I, no, no, I've never had an explanation.
Right.
As to why they want to leave the IBPO and join another union. I don't think the town, I mean, there's no reason for the town to take a position on that, we, we negotiate with whatever union gets certified.
No, but I, I agree with, uh, the reserve officers should not be part of the union.
Correct, that's correct. I just don't understand why you're, why that becomes an issue about what, what union they go with. Well, we should get.
And all those delays, the fact that we can't get a contract done until they get that done, and it just, yeah.
And I think what, the question that the state office is gonna answer is, who's in the union? In other words, here, we're certifying a new union presumably, who is eligible to be a member, I think that's why that question came up. I'm gonna be on there representing the opinion of, I assume, the board and the chief, certainly. Uh, and that is that the town takes a position that we do not want to see reserve officers incorporated. And that's the report. Alright, anything else to come before the board? Motion to adjourn?
I'll vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.